Welcome, everyone. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is May 14, 2024. It is 4:00 PM. Is there motion to call the meeting to order?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is being an audio and video recorded. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in two liberal republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. First order of business, gentlemen, is to approve the minutes of February 27, 2024, regular meeting, and March 19, 2024, regular meeting. Is there motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. First order of new business, we have SERPED here. Mr. Grant King is here to give a presentation. Mr. King, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. So I understand that you received this presentation in a packet. So I'm happy to run through it all and give you the full background. But if you'd like to start with questions about the process, we can do it that way as well. I didn't want to. I wanted to be respectful with your time.
You can go through the slides.
Very good. So I'm the Comprehensive Planning Manager and Deputy Director at SERPED. SERPED is a regional planning agency. We serve 27 cities and towns in Southeast Massachusetts. Akushnet is one of them. We work in a wide variety of fields: transportation planning, environmental planning. We help procure projects and develop projects for the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, so homeland security-related work, economic development, and then land use planning. And that's really what this project is about. It's about basic land use planning. Let's see. So the main goal today is to explain what these priority development areas and priority protection areas are, tell you where they came from, and then give you a little insight about what they do, and then let you know that we've been working with Mark, Jamie, and Ryan Resendis from the Concom to make minor updates to these designations over the past few months. So that's what I'm hoping to do today. So one of the easiest ways to explain what a priority area is, tell you what it's not, right? It is not new zoning. It is not legally binding in any way. It is more a very basic kind of land use mapping exercise that allows communities just to show where you think you would like to grow, and on the flip side, where you would like to preserve land. So it's really important to kind of talk about that first, to know that it's not legally binding. Now that said, in many cases, I can think of numerous cases, we have gone around the table, gotten some mapping going, and communities have said, oh, we want to grow over here, but our zoning doesn't allow that. So it has led to new zoning changes, but this mapping exercise is not new zoning. So what is a PDA, a Priority Development Area? It's areas where you want to see more business growth, or more multifamily housing growth, or more transportation investments. And again, on the priority protection side, it's that opposite. It's where you want to see more conservation land, whether it's for farming activities, or for natural resources, or water resource protection, or just the culture, the sort of character of your community. I want you to know, you'll see a slide in a moment where it was not originally data-driven, but now it is clearly very good data is driving the drafting of these areas. So we do look at your existing zoning. We do look at parcels and land uses. We do look at the availability of infrastructure. And then for the habitat, or the priority protection areas, I should say, the PPAs, we look at those habitats and aquifers and conservation areas. This effort dates back to 2008, when the commuter rail service to New Bedford and Fall River was really first becoming a reality. The Commonwealth wanted to give cities and towns the opportunity to plan for the growth that might come with that project. So back in 2008, communities, you can see on the left-hand side there, did a very general first pass on where they would like to grow. Here, here's a circle roughly in this part of town. In 2013, we came back to the table again with all 27 communities and said, let's refine these boundaries using good, modern data. Let's draft them with those zoning or those aquifer areas in mind, get the boundaries a little tighter, and let's also think about clarifying the purpose for these areas. So not just saying priority development, but what type of development a community might want to see there. And this time around, again, we're trying to update the boundaries through newer data, through new parcels, new zoning. We're trying to engage with the public a little more, so we have interactive maps that you can link to from the webpage that I'll share at the end of the presentation. And we're also hoping to show cities and towns kind of case studies of how they might implement some of these changes. A good example that we've already used tonight is, we would like to grow here, but our zoning doesn't allow it. How might we amend the zoning to do so? And we also, I mean, just frankly, a lot can change in 10 years. So we've discovered coming back to the table that lots of communities have acquired the land in their priority protection areas, or lots of communities have actually changed the zoning. And I want to say, all right, what's your next priority? How are these used? The main example is simply state grant applications. This Commonwealth takes pretty seriously aligning investment decisions with these priority areas. So the best example I can think of is, in an advisory capacity, we help the Commonwealth review Mass Works applications every year. And one of the things we look for is this investment in a priority development area. The example on the screen in front of you guys is from North Attleboro, where you can draw a direct line between an area being designated as a PDA, funding for technical assistance to change that zone, and a $1.3 million Mass Works application, and then roughly 200 units of mixed-use housing in the downtown. A clear kind of success story of how these PDAs have turned into real-world bricks and mortar. Similarly, in priority protection areas, we can draw a direct line between technical assistance funding to update an open space and recreation plan in the town of Norton. That updated the plan, helping the town become eligible for land grants. That's local acquisitions for natural diversity, DCS, popular DCS program for acquiring land, and then 150 permanently preserved acres in the town of Norton. As I said, I've been working with, and my staff has been working with Jamie, and Mark, and Ryan to update this, working from that past planning from 2008 and 2013. And then here's a summary of the changes we made. I have a map of that summary, those changes that I can bring up, although it's not centered on your town anymore. And then I hope you had time to look at the interactive map that we included. That's really it for me. I just wanted to...
Can you get that to be the town of Akushnet? Because I tried to go to that link today, and it didn't work.
Sure, sure. Let's try it. So I'll click, I'll go back to the presentation, click on it, hopefully it pops right up. It's centered on the entire service area, so you have to drag it a little bit south. And here we are in Akushnet. Would you like me to walk through the changes we made?
Can you explain, so the viewers at home, when they watch this tape, and of course, myself and the board, what green, what purple, what hatched looks like?
Very good. Very good. So the green are the protection areas, those areas that you want to conserve, or you want to acquire more land. The purple were the development areas. Many of those smaller areas were removed as part of my work with Jamie and Mark. And then the orange, these are these kind of combined areas, where you want to see some type of growth, but that growth needs to be of a very careful nature. So a good example, I see you've got this, where I can explain why they changed the designation from development to combined. But the best example would be like a historic village, where you're okay seeing some infill growth, but it would need to match the historic character of the town. That's the cleanest example. Let me turn off the old boundaries and just, so these are just your new boundaries. Here are your old boundaries in the hatched. So you can see some of the things that were removed, where these kind of crossroads, they called them in 2013, and 2008, business districts, where they wanted to see some more commercial growth. One of those down at Main Street and Perry Hill Road was retained, I think if I remember from the working sessions, because there are some existing businesses that are looking to either, and there's a closed business, is that right, Jamie?
Not yet. It's not closing.
So they didn't want to, we didn't want to, you know, remove that development designation from there. And then this was changed to combined, because, again, correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, I've done this with 27 communities, but there was potential for this site to serve as a recreation outcome in the future?
50 years.
50 years.
Right. So that's why it was not a develop, no longer just development, to leave the door open to that type of outcome. Those were really the only changes, other than, as you can see, this was a big, let me turn this off again.
That's the watershed area for Coalition, though?
Yes, sir. Exactly. So this was, in 2008, was a 200-foot buffer around linear water features, around surface water. And because of all the town's activity with partners like the Buzzards Bay Coalition, they wanted to focus on, wrong button, on really acquiring more land, and how that land might be improved through further investments. And that, so rather than being just a buffer, they, every parcel that intersected that buffer was added at Ryan's guidance. And then this is new as well, down kind of a riverfront access priority protection area to allow more access to the river.
Can you go towards us?
Oh, yeah.
That purple spot right there?
Right here?
Nope. Yeah, big field. What's that? Where's that at?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's White's Dairy.
Yeah.
That's going to be a giant solar farm.
Do you recall why we retained that as a priority development area, Jamie?
That was Ryan.
It's a, it's a big field, and there's commercial properties all up the front by Middle Road over there.
Okay.
And there's a small circle around that was rezoned commercial going around the facility, the old White's Dairy facility, which is still very functionable. But now that big field in the backside of it, where that little pond is, if you point, you see that little pond? That whole field, all in there, all the way over to Mary Drive, is a proposed solar field.
Gotcha.
When we, when we had discussed this with Ryan, that we weren't aware of that at the time.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So this is a development area, as it's currently designated. That would, that would make sense.
Yep.
If I pull up, this is, that's like an online map. This is the kind of behind-the-scenes geographic information systems. I'm worried about trying to turn this on, over the Wi-Fi, but I can hopefully pull up the world imagery, the, so you can see what you're talking about, Selectmen. Yeah, right here.
Yep, that field back there is proposed solar now?
Yeah.
If you go, can you go back?
Sure.
See the yellow purple?
Sure, yes, sir.
So, yep, down over towards Slocum Street? What's that? That area there?
Yeah, this corresponded to some existing zoning districts, so that's a good question. Let me, I'm going to turn, stay with me here. This might crash because we're on the Wi-Fi, but I've gone south into town, and if I go to, I didn't prepare your zoning top, stand by. Luckily, alphabetically, you're first. You can see that the drawings actually corresponds to your existing zoning districts. So I'm going to turn these off and on. That corridor running through the center of town there on South Main?
Business Village?
Is your business village, yes, sir. And then around it is the fairly new residential village district. So those boundaries correspond directly to...
What's the blue?
Go ahead, yep.
It's not blue anymore. Right there. What's, what's that blue area? Is that commercial, industrial, or something?
Mm-hmm, exactly.
Okay.
Yep. So those are all actually zoning districts, but with, you know, the street lines visible. So the last step, just so you know, we're happy to take edits tonight. You know, again, this is not SERPED's designation. We don't have any skin in the game at all with your, with your designations. But we do, because we serve 27 cities and towns. The last step, and that was kind of on the slide that I skipped over quickly, the last step is here, regional screening. What we, what we do, using a kind of a GIS, that's that mapping system you saw, model with a little bit of math in it, we ask it to show us things that perform really well with protecting preservation areas, for example, or have a lot of really good potential business build-out. And then we kind of score them and look at which of our, which of our cities and towns' priority areas kind of raised to the level of regionally significant in terms of scale, or in terms of how well they do their jobs protecting areas. And then we kind of make a shortlist. We don't make any designations of our own, but we choose from all, the universe of all your choices and say, yeah, this is a really good one. This is regionally significant. And that process will happen this fall. We'll widely publicize the work, show you all the methodology, and have two workshops, one likely in the southern part of our district, so near here, and probably in New Bedford or Fall River, and then one probably in the northern part of our district, just to make people be able to travel to it a little easier. But that's the last step of this work. Wouldn't change any of yours, it's just kind of like our regional planning perspective of things.
So your, an example you had, I think it was Attleboro?
North Attleboro.
North Attleboro, where you had some housing, and then that opened you up, was it Mass Works grant? So...
Yeah, we back up.
Going through this process, would this make us, you know, put us in a better position to realize something like that? You know, because I'm just thinking of the Kids to Give, there's, you know, this down by Slocum Street, you know, if that would open us up to opportunities there for, because we're trying to do like Slocum Street and all that work.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so I mean, the short answer is yes, but it still has to go through the typical process.
Yeah.
So this particular example, they realized the zoning wasn't in place the way they wanted it to be, so they applied to a grant to change the zoning. That zoning went to town meeting, and where it could have either succeeded or failed, it happened to succeed. And then because that zoning was in place, and they had kind of a bird in hand, private sector partner around, they brought that to the Mass Works grant and said, but for this sewer line extension, I think that's what it was for, yeah, roads and roadways and sewers, this might not happen, may we please, like I'm sure the town has done, apply for an infrastructure award. That was successful. And then the units themselves were built. There's actually a transit facility there to the...
Why do you, you use the terminology, "apply for a grant for changing zoning"?
Gotcha.
We're a municipality, like, we can change zoning whenever we feel at town meeting. So why would we need to apply for a grant?
Great question. It's not asking permission, it's asking for the help, because I don't think you have a full-time town planner, right?
We don't have a town planner.
Yeah. So it's that. So it's, rather than the planning board or the select board having to actually write the bylaw itself, they worked with a consultant. I think it was actually SERPED in this case. They, at no cost to the town, they worked with a consultant to draft the legally, the language, the zoning language. That's why. It's not, it's not applying or asking permission, it's getting funding to actually write the bylaw.
Let me, let me get to the bigger question, because the biggest thing of concern for me, when I read through this original document, it says, "The payment, the total master plan project are approximately $140,000. The town practitioner will be responsible for $100,000 of this cost to be funded by the fiscal year 24 Housing Choice Grant."
Yes, sir. So we've skipped to the second agenda item, the second reason I'm here. That's a different, a different project, but they're related. They're very similar in that while, where this is a land use planning exercise.
That's on the, that's on the master plan one. Is it that part of this?
No, sir.
Which one are we on then? Because I'm getting confused now.
Yes, sir. Priority development and priority protection areas.
Is that part of the master plan?
No, but let me, if you, if you'll allow me, they're very similar, super similar ideas, where a community comes together and says, hey, these are our goals, these are our priorities, this is where we'd like to grow, this is where we'd like to preserve. That's all this is. It's a mapping exercise, again, at no cost to you or the citizens of Akushnet. The master plan process is very similar, where you kind of, it's like a trip to your general practitioner once a year, right? You go and you get a physical, what should I work on? What are my, what are my deficits? What are my goals for the next year? A town comes together, and in a master plan, there are eight required, excuse me, nine required chapters under Mass General Law for a master plan. Land use is one of them. That's really this. Economic development and housing. There is open space and recreation, natural and cultural resources, transportation and circulation, services and facilities, and implementation. How do we make all this real? That's that second agenda item that Jamie and Mark and I have been sort of developing. So that's why I'm here, we're trying to kill two birds with one stone. You just tried to kill that second bird a little earlier.
All right. So let me try to kill that bird. Again, you can go back to my original question, because this, this document says, "Town of Akushnet Local Contract Master Plan", and that's where it mentions the payment that I just read off. And it goes to the $100,000 from the Housing Choice Grant.
Sure.
So how are we getting that grant if we're not designated as a Housing Choice Community?
That's where I have a little note, hopefully, where I didn't know if that was the right one. Jamie asked us to prepare a draft scope of services. My understanding is that there is $100,000 available for this project. I wrote that program in. I did not know if that was the correct one. On my copy, there's a note saying...
So your little note says, "Is this correct funding program?"
Yeah.
Or is it a community planning grant? And that's my question, because if you look up, that Housing Choice Community Grant is specifically talked about MBTA housing, right?
Yep.
And I'm 100% against the town of Akushnet accepting money from a state grant.
Yeah.
That's going to now say, once we take the $100,000 from the state, now you're forced to do that kind of housing for that train station, which nobody knows if it's going to fail, the rail is going to fail, or it's going to succeed. I think there's a general consensus amongst a lot of people that I speak to that it's not going to survive. And I wouldn't want to take money from the state and be handcuffed with tentacles around this community, and the people of this community, to say, you took our money to do your master plan via that kind of a grant. You're stuck with that housing now, pal. And I know there's a lot of municipalities further north fighting MBTA housing planning and all that stuff.
Clear and clear. So just to clarify, the Housing Choice Initiative, I'm not even sure this is where I was counting on you.
It was in the earmark.
Okay.
In the outside section.
So you can set that down for a moment, but let's return to it.
Set what down?
That is, the master plan project is not being funded by the Housing Choice Initiative.
How was it?
Just an error. I thought it was either that or the community planning.
In earmark. In the outside section of the budget.
Schmidt, Schrausen, I think he said it's an earmark in the budget.
All right, so that, I can erase that from my head?
Yes, sir, but...
Because that's bad news for us, and I wouldn't allow it to happen.
So let's return to that, though. My understanding is that the Housing Choice Initiative, let's imagine that it was funded by the Housing Choice Initiative, doesn't say that you can't work on other things, like this gentleman mentioned about, maybe we want more housing in this particular area of town. There are lots of grant funding through that program. Doesn't, it's not all about that MBTA community section 3A, but I hear you loud and clear.
That grant program, I did do a little research on it today on mass.gov, right? And it does specifically say, "A spot of general size needs to be dedicated towards that kind of cluster housing," right?
That's section 3A. Yep. And we're helping numerous cities and towns either try and understand their liability, like it sounds like you guys are, are we, are we, are we not? I don't think you are currently subject to it, but that could change. And then some of them have chosen to prepare draft bylaws, and then wait and see what happens with the courts this fall, as you know, Milton, as you referred to, and a couple others.
Several.
Yep. So that's going to make its way through the court system. The Supreme Judicial Board has sent a likely rule in October, I think, so you get some kind of final clarity on it there. And then it's up to the, you know, you guys, the leaders and citizens of Akushnet, so whether you comply or not, or if you're even subject to it. So I hear you, there's a lot of confusion about it. Whenever the word housing comes up, trust me, I come from a rural community that's maybe subject to it, maybe not. There's a lot of similar conversations like this. That's what this is all about, coming to you in a transparent way, where do you want to grow, where you don't.
Yeah.
The master plan, what are your goals? How can we help?
Right.
So you're not, I hear you loud and clear that there's a lot of skepticism and a lot of concern. We're here to help you navigate that, not to tentacle anything.
Right. Yeah, not you folks, I'm just saying, once we take money, right? And that's the problem with grants. Everybody thinks it's free money, but it's never going to be free, right? There's going to be tentacles attached to it. Somewhere down the road, they're going to say, wait a minute, Charlie, you took $100,000 from us, state, and in that little grant program, Housing Choice Grant Program, says you will have that kind of housing, so do it. And we're going to be forced to do it when I know other municipalities are fighting it.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of fights going on with it right now, right? And I don't think that's with the town of Akushnet. I would much rather ask the taxpayers for $100,000 in free cash to fund that, if that's the way it was going to be funded. So it's ours and only ours, right? But if we have earmark money, it's a different, so we just got to get rid of that language before somebody signs this goofy contract.
Well, I'd like to think it's not goofy, but there's no, there's no, that's why it says draft. Nothing in there that you guys don't want to have in there will end up in that document. Or you may choose not to sign it. That's also a fine outcome.
Yeah, no, I think, I think the concept, right, it's something that we're probably overdue on. I just, I don't want strings attached by any other regulatory arm or state agencies dictating to us, because quite honestly, we didn't get an opportunity to vote on that rail.
Right.
As a community.
Right.
But now somebody's going to try to stuff housing, cluster housing, and change the rural character, or just the character alone of our community, because of a rail that could possibly fail. So I've even talked to my state reps and said, you know what? Give us a bye. Wait three years. When that train station opens, wait three years. If that thing's still functioning and is running profitably, then we'll consider doing it. But don't stuff housing down our throat. That thing fails if we got that crappy-looking housing in our community because of your fictitious rail, right?
Gotcha.
That's, that's the concern. And it's not just my concern. I've talked to a number of my constituents, and they're kind of livid about that rail without us voting on it. And I get that, and I'm part of that.
I hear you loud and clear. We're hearing it all across the areas we serve. Just, I think we, you know, it's above my pay grade, but we have to be patient and see what happens in the courts, and do our best to kind of all act in good faith, and just know that this is not connected to that. Definitely not this. I mean, I was in a master plan meeting, and if you'll allow me, a quick anecdote, in a community we serve in the northern part of the district, they're still trying to figure out whether they are subject to it or not as well. And their strategy is, well, let's go ahead and try and figure out what the liability would be, what the zone would have to be, and have it ready, just like you said, have it ready. And then if we legally have to comply, then at least the strategy would be in place, but let's not pull the trigger until we've got more clarity. So that's a perfectly good, good faith approach, I would say.
All right. So we're just going to make sure that funding source comes up?
Yes, sir.
I'm happy to hear that, because when I was reading, and I briefly just touched on that, kind of that Housing Choice Program, and I'm like, well, wait a minute, we're not even designated, right? Thank God we're not, really. But, you know, this is all stuff that we absolutely need to explore in our community, right? We're getting limited on where we can develop due to wetlands and swampy.
Yeah.
Even if it's not, even if it's not considered wetlands, there's a lot of swampy area, and if it's not sewer, you're out. You can't develop because you can't do Title V, right?
Gotcha.
And you got to get sewer out there in order to develop that land. But that's something that this would obviously bring into that scope and say, look, this is a nice parcel of land that could be developed. However, you need sewer, because it's not perccable, right?
Yeah. So what we do as part of, I would like to say, every master plan, I've done either all or part of roughly a dozen, is we do run one of those build-out analyses, where you look at like, all of the, all of the factors that you just kind of ran through in your mind. What's available? What's already built? What's wetland? What's conservation? What's difficult to perk without sewer or a very expensive steptic? And then you look at the available building, like theoretical building available left in town, and then you look, combine that with estimates of demand for growth, and you kind of have a decent idea of where things might happen. That's, returning back to the priority development and priority protection areas, that's really what this is all about. Where do you want to grow as a community? Where would you be okay with more sewer and more investments, like you just mentioned, on Slocum Street?
The town of Akushnet has an interesting history with master plans. You know, if I remember correctly, the first master plan was done in 1965. It wasn't done until 2008. And I think, you know, we're still paying the price for some 40-plus years of not doing anything prior to 2008.
Gotcha.
And then, Kevin, you were involved in it when we had the master plan, we built a new library, built a new police station.
Right.
We upgraded our Pope Park. We did the Parting Waves Building. We, you know, we've done a lot, because that was our North Star. So I think this is important, you know, really important to keep going, and keep that momentum. But I think, you know, the one thing that this town, I think, desperately needs, quite frankly, is an aesthetic facelift. You know, I feel like times that we're, we're old and tired, you know, there's things that we need to do to improve our infrastructure. to do to improve our infrastructure, but the bones are good, but we need to take it to the next level, you know? So I think this would be an opportunity to do that.
And I think we need to open up zoning, really. I mean, I don't know how, it probably doesn't need to be part of a master plan, it could be probably done by a planning board, but we're really confined for our business zoning, right? And I've had some conversations, I've talked to Mr. Francois about it a little bit, and other people in town that run different boards, and it just, it really baffles me that we don't have our corridors like Main Street. You pointed out some down by the Perry Hill where the Country Hardware Store is, and then you have the liquor store in the Blue Land and everything else, but then we have another one down the road, Mass Collision or something like that, down near Repwell. So we have little businesses, right? But they're all subject to go to like ZBA for special permits, and I just, it kind of blows my mind why, like this corridor here, we have, like, it's kind of like a mixed-use business type thing, and so many feet in from the center of the road, it's like a hundred feet on each side of the road, that Business Village dish thing, and it goes down here to like Oliver Ave, near Pope Park, and it stops. You know, I, it kind of blows my mind, why do we stop? You know, and we have these little sporadic businesses throughout time, why wouldn't we just continue that down the corridors, right? In Middle Road, I know a few people that there was a small building, I think somebody's actually living in it, like a residential home now, but they were forced to not open up a little breakfast place because it wasn't zoned, right? And it was far, I just think that's ridiculous, that we don't open up zoning down our main corridors. And I'm not saying, you know, blow out big commercial businesses, but, you know, the city of New Befford, I'm in a zone up there where it's mixed-use business, right? We could figure out what we would wanna see in certain areas down those corridors and say, you know, a hundred feet in and two hundred feet down from the sidewalks or whatever, have a mixed-use business and label like what we could allow in there as mixed-use business instead of just residential.
This is awesome. These are, these are the exact types of ideas that we try and unearth in the master plan process. And back to your point about how it led to specific investments, and it was like the North Star, I think was the phrase, the master plan process, if you choose to proceed, at least the ones we run are all about soliciting input from the public. So there will be several events where we wanna hear from business owners, here, obviously from elected and appointed officials such as yourselves, but really hear about those like goals and what are the problems? If it's a local, I heard from you loud and clear that it's not necessarily about making the more development, but making it easier to do business in Akushnet with your, for your existing, for your existing businesses. We hear that a lot. There are strategies that you can pursue, permitting guides, e-government, streamline permitting. So like that type of thing that I hear and my staff would hear during numerous master plan workshops would be, would be taking notes, just like I was, try to find consensus and then match it to strategies.
Kevin, you just mentioned, we're going in the opposite direction. You just talked about a business that was turned into residential. We had Pop Casey's, which was a thriving restaurant, is now residential. We're losing businesses to people converting those, those locations into residences. You know, we go to places like Main, you see a corridor like South Main Street here that look like homes are, you know, you got a small restaurant or an antique shop or things of that nature that build character, you know? I think those are the things that we should be looking at, you know?
Right.
It's kind of crazy.
Yeah.
There's another area of town, but I don't know if I wanna talk about that on camera. Not just yet, anyway, right? Because it involves an adjacent property.
Gotcha.
But I think that'll, yeah, that'll be some of the conversations, right? It opens up some opportunities for us in the Town of Akushnet and plus others, right? And that's kind of where we need to be looking at, right? You gotta help businesses thrive, right? And accommodate businesses, because without them, we're done. You know? And that's, I just, I just, for the life of me, I can't understand, all these years have passed by, and we've never opened up corridors to mixed-use business at least, at minimum, right? And then I see people go and they get turned down.
Gotcha.
I'm like, that, that doesn't make any sense. Like, we're clustering everything in like this side of town, right? The South Main Street side, everything's clustered over here, and the traffic is ridiculous. So why wouldn't we start opening up those alleyways down there and having more people funnel over there instead of everybody coming over here, they're dying, right? There's a lot of our restaurants are in this little strip right here.
Right.
And you get all these people coming in and clustering up, you see the traffic congestion over here. If you put a little restaurant on the other side of town.
Gotcha.
They probably boom, right? But they can't, because it's not allowed in zoning.
It became a church.
Something, you know, literally.
A thriving-
There you go.
-place banquet hall. And the zoning wasn't there to turn it into a, there was a bona fide, you know, restaurateur, couldn't get, couldn't get the ZBA to approve it, and it's now a church. That's gonna pay tax.
Right off the tax roll. So that's kind of, I mean, from my perspective, it's just something, you know, I know we'll form a committee for the, a master plan committee and have people engage, and then you'll come back to us, local officials, and we'll tell you, and we'll look at what the committee's been talking about, and the local town officials will say, yeah, we don't really like that, or in the workshops, and I know you, it was you folks that did the Metapoyz one, right?
Correct.
And I know that I looked at that, it was probably a couple of years ago, but I know there was people that would direct me to go look at it, and it was kind of cool because you did that and you opened it up online for people's input, right? What would you like to see?
Absolutely.
And you gave just real simple choice, right? Instead of making people have to stop and think of what, you just put a list of things, right? And you said, what's important to you, right? Open space, recreation, bike path, whatever it is, and you just click, 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 and you got an overall consensus, and you bring it back to the master plan committee and say, so this is what the community said online is what they'd like to see, let's build that into the master plan.
Exactly.
You know, that's the vision that you need to have and involve the community, not just six or seven guys or girls on a committee and then a couple of us, you know, town boards giving the input. It's all about the people of the, because quite honestly, I say this all the time, the taxpayers are the shareholders of this community, right? We're the ones that built this community thus far to what it is today.
Yeah.
And we should be taking their input to build it for the future, right?
Couldn't agree more. So you referred to a survey, we'll have master plan surveys. When we get, you know, we like to follow the project where it leads us, so we might find that there will be like a visual preference survey about, you said, town needs a facelift. So, okay, if we're talking about mixed-use zoning or longer corridor that needs design guidelines or design standards to make it look the way you feel like it should look, well, what is that? We have to ask the public. So there can be like visual preference surveys about what type of growth examples you'd be comfortable with, and then that can inform design guidelines. So it's all about a conversation with the, with the town. Again, you know, I've done about a dozen of these, and I can comfortably say that all the good ideas come from the public, from somebody who comes to a master plan workshop after work and just gives their idea and you-
I think, I think that's a great idea. That's a great idea. I wasn't even thinking of that aspect of the planning, part of the design aspect of it, right? So you kind of put that, that that's the way it needs to look, the character of the building, if somebody's gonna put a building in, the character, this is, this is what it is. You can't go down the road over here and build a pink building and have a purple one over here and make our town look like a rainbow, right? It's just, it's, everything's gonna aesthetically fit in to how the people of the community would like to see it, right?
Yep.
So I think that makes a lot of sense in that aspect of it.
Cool. Yeah, so I mean, we like to listen like very actively and then try to match strategies that, in this particular example, would be designing guidelines, likely in Planning Board Rules and Regulations. Do you guys have site plan review?
Yeah.
So you probably, many cities and towns choose to put that type of guidance in Site Plan Review Rules and Regulations. They don't require under, it's not a standard, so it's not actual zoning, but it's a, you put it on the table across from the, your development partner, and you go, this is what we'd like to see and what we'd like not to see.
Right.
It just makes the decision-making process collaborative, predictable. I've worked in the private sector, I understand that's what they want. So it's not a requirement, but it's a dialogue that's open. So that's, that's one good example that we've unearthed tonight in, what is it, thirty minutes or so, that could likely come out of a master plan process.
Excellent. All right, well, you answered my question about the funding, so I'm not getting tentacles wrapped around me. Mr. Kelly?
As you know, I've been involved with Serpents for years, from one in my own community and here. They recently, well, recent history, they did the Norton Master Plan, and we've had twelve businesses open since the master plan was completed and using that as a guideline where they should open. And we even had a former library that was owned by the college has been turned into a professional building. And it was all based on the work they did out of the master plan.
The only, the only other thing that my concern, but it's a town issue, is it's on page four, who's gonna really administrate this thing, right? The Town of Akushnet, the Designee will complete the following tasks. Identify a contact person, will act as a liaison to town departments, boards, and commissions. Assist with the compilation of town documents relative to this project, especially new relevant GIS. So not having a planner.
Yeah.
We do have an individual that works in the planning board, retiring, but would like to come on and spend some time in the winter months, but, you know, I don't know how that's gonna, he's just really familiar with the planning board office, very detail-oriented. I spoke on him last time, Mr. Paul Sullivan. I know Mark used to be very highly of Paul as well. You know, we need somebody like that, that has that kind of time and knowledge, Doc, that already knows where everything is, right? To make everything a smooth transition and keep fluidly pushing the materials to you, whatever you're gonna need, he's probably the best person to do it, in my opinion, within this town. I, I know that we've got some money in the budget to keep him on board, so I'm hoping that that's gonna be funded at town meeting, we can keep him on board, but I couldn't think of a better person to do that than him.
I couldn't agree more. It's a conversation that I've started having with him. Obviously, we're hoping to get a town planner, whether it fall apart or whatever the situation may be, we're hoping to get one sooner or later. But when we do get a town planner, I think that having someone like Paul would be a great asset to him or her, and also whoever else is doing the master plan. So I totally couldn't agree more. And with the brief conversations that I've had with him, him might be something that is, so.
He's just, he's just an incredible, look, he's an incredible individual, he's turned that office right around. What it looked like three years ago compared to what it looks like now, you go in the office, you ask him for something, he walks right over to it, pulls it right out. It was never like that in the past, and I just can't say enough about the man. He's, he's an incredible individual, and he just really knows his crap, so I-
Sounds perfect.
I'll do my best to convince him to help us out and work on this over the next year.
You can change that language to, from one to, you know, at least one point of contact. All we're looking for with that is someone that can, me or my staff can rely on.
Right, that's the problem, is I don't really know anybody else that's gonna have that kind of wealth of knowledge without taking them away from their actual duties, right?
Well, that's, that's our job, Selectmen, it's, we're not, we're not taking anything away. It's just like, for this one, it's more like, okay, we need to schedule a master plan workshop. We'd like to do it on these five dates, can you help us? Choose the best location, choose the best time. It's really that kind of thing. It's not like write or read or, you know, we're, we're your full-service consultant on this.
No, I know, it's just like you're getting information-
Yes, sir.
-from the past for you to put into it and understand it. And he actually understands the 2008 version of Selectmen won't have talked about master plan. He understands it pretty well.
Sounds perfect.
So it's kind of things that you guys, you could pick up the phone and say, well, he could tell you, well, we already did that, we don't need that in there, or this is what was discussed in the old master plan, perhaps just give you a copy of the old master plan for you folks to browse through and see what's already going on, right? Simplify the process.
Sounds great.
That's all.
It's perfect.
But as long as that funding source is ish me.
Yep.
It's, as soon as I started reading, I'm like, oh no, this just can't happen, so.
Good. I'm glad we, that was my error.
Selectmen won't, I said, different part of gold, which is earmark, right? And we're off and running.
So if, if, if I may, Sir, if we could circle back to the priority development and priority protection areas, if you have any comments on those, and I felt really good about that working session with Mark, Brian, and Jamie, it's not too late, right? So in other words, if you get home and click that link, it worked for me just then, I can, I'm happy to try and, I could set up a meeting to walk through it with you. Just where, the, the chance to change these boundaries, you know, for the third time is kind of closing pretty soon by the end of June.
What link did you, because I don't know, when you clicked on the bottom and you showed that link, I got it right here and I even wrote right here, link doesn't work.
Okay.
And it's the HTTPS colon two forward slash A R C G dot I S forward slash one M Y capital S for Y.
Yeah, so if you click on it or copy and paste it into a browser, all I'm saying is, if I click now, it opened up for me.
I think you said M Y.
What is it?
There's no M in that.
It's a Billy link.
Oh, whoa, whoa, so you put the wrong stuff on this piece of paper. Don't be doing that with my master plan. What is, that's why I asked you, what is the link? Yeah, wait, it's, that's not even it, you got J U, hold on.
So unfortunately, these links are generated by that same software that I showed you. This is the, you know, inside-
I was trying to write that link.
Oh, my fault, my fault. Took it away from me.
Because the link's wrong, that you printed in the pamphlet, one Y J U P L, not even close.
Cool. Happy to, happy to take more edits.
I tried to open it with my iPad.
Yeah.
I had to use a computer.
I was on an iPad, but the link is, Dave just pointed out, the last few letters is wrong. So whatever, I'll try that one.
Yes, sir, on my iPad.
I couldn't get the iPad to open quickly, so I had to use a computer.
Man, well, I'm just saying that the link on this page didn't work.
Gotcha.
So.
Thank you very much for your time. That took a while, I didn't intend for it to.
It's all right, it's educational, right? That's, that's the important aspect of it, is they give the public and give us the educational aspect of it.
I'll give you a call, we can fix the draft-
Sure.
And bring it back.
Happy to make any edits to that draft. The other last connection was, I think you were gonna put me in touch with-
Jen.
And I need to do so to understand those.
Jen has to go through the portal, the state portal, to have the funds released.
Thank you very much for your time. Looking forward to working with you. You guys have ended up citizens at home.
Appreciate your time.
Appreciate it.
All right, so we have a few resignation letters, it seems to be, I guess some of these people have been appointed, but didn't have an interest in being on the bicycle committee. So is there a motion to accept the resignation of Adam Nowicki from the bicycle committee?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to remove Amy Gordon from the bicycle committee? Is there a motion to remove Amy Gordon from the bicycle committee?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Whole business Serpent contract master plan.
We just didn't deal with that, right?
He was on a bunch of things, so that takes care of that. The Teamsters MOA gentleman just wanted to make a correction that there was a half copy left on the desk. It was incorrect, and the part that was incorrect was to be eligible for any retro pay. An officer must still be working for the town as a police officer on the day of ratification. Involuntary retirees will be eligible for retro pay and retro pay, retro buyback allowances. And then on the shift differential, the fiscal year '25 was left out. It is inside the version that we did vote on. But again, two signatures were on an old version that was not correct. So is there a motion to approve the version put in front of us today?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just care of that. I'll just jump right over to Eversource paving, just to let you guys know, it's on the DBW. I'm just going to jump around a little bit, waiting until five o'clock. We did receive the funds. There was some conversation between Anthony from Eversource and the DBW about not giving us the funding that they originally agreed to for 900 Middle Road, Cory Bedano, North Anthony, Henrietta. I think that Hotley was on that last phase. But they, Anthony did turn that conversation around in-house and did get us back the full funding for that project. So I appreciate Anthony from Eversource, he's here. Anthony, thank you very much for your efforts.
Is he hiding?
He's over here. So kudos damn up, we'll throw down the next agenda to discuss what, how we're going to move forward with that paving. Just to get rid of that, but seeing how, 10 minutes left to go.
I have one announcement, Mr. Chairman, that the Matta Poise that took up the MOA on the town planner on Monday night, and they are going to forward the executed copy to this board to execute. They also are going to forward a copy of the draft advertisement that will be within the budget parameters that we discussed.
Very good.
So it's moving.
Okay. And we got a few minutes, I can't open up the public hearing early because we don't know if any of us is going to show up. So it's nine minutes left to go. Mr. Kelly, you want to give a quick budget update to the board? Or do you want me to just say we're still looking for a quarter of a million dollars?
Actually, with a little bit of the shake and baking that you and I talked about, we're 187,000 short. But we've got two major entities that we haven't refined yet.
Correct.
One is the insurance, the other is public safety. And it's been an interesting project, sitting for hours with you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure has. Been a lot of money that we squeezed and gone through the process over and over and over again. It's just now that we're, I guess, Kelly's terminology is, we're trying to roll quota stacks at this point, right? And that's the difficult part, and we're still that far away. But we do have executive session to discuss different things with the board tonight, so.
But general government, there's only 54,538, and that's for most of the departments in the town government increase. Public safety right now is around a $200,000 increase. Education is around a $750,000 increase. Public Works, which is driven mainly by.
CMAS.
CMAS and the water increase is 192,000. Human Services is a decrease of 80,000. Culture Rec is an increase of 4,000. Insurance, which we're squeezing now, is 282,000.
That includes pensions?
Includes pensions.
Health insurance and pensions combined, is that?
Health insurance, pensions, Medicare, and all the other insurances, unemployment workers comp, et cetera. So we're still rolling quarters.
Yep. Doc got it again tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll get it down.
All right. Selectmen announcements.
Sure, you have a Selectmen's announcement?
I do, if it's all right with you.
Knock yourself out.
Couple months ago, not even, probably about a month and a half ago, I had a young gentleman who is a Cock and Tree student, at Old Colony, reach out to me in regards to replacing the little library that was at Pope Park, which had been vandalized and damaged to the point where it was unsafe, so it was removed. And I talked to Chad, and Chad was in full support of it. And just yesterday, I helped three young Old Colony students install a little library at Pope Park. So I wanted to give a little shout out to Tyler, Dimitri, and Noah for doing what most seniors don't want to do, and that's dedicate some time to the community, and they put together a nice little library. We put it up in the park, and they actually stocked it with books as well. They did a book drive at their school. So anybody that had old books that younger brothers and sisters had, so they actually pretty much fully loaded it as well. So I just wanted to say, it was a, it was a nice change of pace to see some young gentlemen put some effort.
Did you install it where the cameras can see it this time?
I put it exactly where it was.
Oh, okay. We do have security, I'll go.
As long as there's cameras there now, actually, I wouldn't say now because I watched Lucas put the cameras up. It would be in camera view.
Excellent.
Should be good.
Yep.
But yeah, it was just, just want to give them a shout out for being outstanding young gentlemen and good residents of Acushnet.
Still want anything on the Selectmen announcements? Well, I'll take an opportunity right now, so you know, we have a few minutes to kill. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence for the passing away of our tree ward, normally for that. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kelly.
I think we should end it with the phrase that he always left my office with.
God bless.
God bless.
Yep. He was, he was a good man and a good friend of so many of us in the community. Called me up and said, Kev, it's a fat French cousin. Like, Norman, really? It's too bad, he's a good man. All right, I will declare at five o'clock to open the public hearing. Verizon, New England, and Star Electric, D B A, Eversource to place multiple joint own poles along Mendel Road. The installation of these, Eversource's request for the purpose of cable upgrade along Route. Give us petition numbers, it's on the agenda, I'm not going to read all of that. And there's numerous different petitions, different locations from Mendel Road, extended through Perry Hill Road and onto Main Street, and Acushnet Mass. Whoever we have from Verizon, Eversource, whoever wants to speak, please announce your name, where you're from.
Sure. Ross Billidu, representing Verizon, New England, 201 Oxford Road, Mansfield, Massachusetts. Verizon, as you guys are probably aware, is Verizon's maintenance area, Acushnet, rather, is Verizon's maintenance area. So we're obligated to set these poles. Eversource reached out to us in our, with our internal communications about upgrading and placing some new poles out here for a project they have going on to place some new services and reconductorize some of their equipment overhead. In order to do so, like I said, we need to place a few new poles from Mendel Road all the way up Perry Hill Road to Main Street. I know some of those poles will be replaced, some of them to be new, like I said, for Eversource-driven project.
So I've been whacking this paddle around for a long time, and it just seems to get worse and worse and worse every month. I've talked about broken poles, double poles, strapped poles, in places where upgrades aren't even happening. On the other side of town, they've been there for well over a year, and nothing's still been done about those poles being taken out. As far as I'm concerned, it shouldn't be the town of Acushnet's problem to contact Cable, Verizon, or Eversource to get their crap off a pole and move it into the new pole and get rid of the old pole. If it's Verizon's pole, then it's your job to get everybody out there and do that, and that's failed miserably in the town. We have hundreds of new double poles on that side of town, which is just beyond me. I don't even, I can't even fathom it. But I know that we've had conversations with Eversource, and I guess it's just the way things are put in the queue, and I'm going to let Anthony speak on that.
Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, it's Anthony, Community Relations, Eversource. So I think for some of these new poles, we're not quite ready to do it. It's part of a larger upgrade to four towns of Acushnet. Fairhaven, Matta Poise, and Rochester, we're upgrading four substations. And then with that comes all this support work. In the town of Acushnet, we have a reconductoring project along Main Street. That's really the priority for the moment. So maybe we put this, the support work for the DER project off a little bit, let us, give us some time to do the work on the Acushnet cluster reconductoring. Maybe revisit this late summer, early fall. It might be, might be a better solution. This way, we can show you guys some progress. I mean, Verizon's here, we're all, we've been working at this for a couple of weeks now. We've been, myself, Michelle, our scheduling, planning teams, trying to put a plan together to tackle, you know, some of these situations in Acushnet. So I think it's, it's showing a lot of progress. We're in a much better place than we used to be, with a lot, a lot of communication back and forth. I think that's maybe a positive solution we can look forward to tonight.
Last time we met, we talked about all the broken poles, pieces laying on the ground. Those pieces are still laying on the ground, the broken poles are still there. There's one right out here that nobody, everybody, you can't miss it, right? Down Middle Road, I talked about Nyes laying in Cock Street. On Middle Road is a piece of pole that just snapped and sitting there on the ground.
Yep. So you told me about two.
Down Middle Road on Birch Street, I talked about that one. Down Keen Road, I've driven down Keen Road, there's poles strapped through each other, same thing, cut off right at height length.
I took the two transmission poles, right, I think they were on middle, those are gone.
Yeah, the ones that.
Didn't they right away?
Yeah, they were laying on the ground.
Yeah.
So thanks for doing that, but we get a lot of broken poles that are unsafe, and I talked about it last time, and they're still there.
Okay.
So I think when you start removing those poles and showing the town, they make it a good faith attempt to get rid of all these double poles, especially the ones that are dangerous that we've been talking about for months, and nothing's been done, they won't allow you to start setting more poles.
Yeah, I'm sure.
So, Mr. Kelly?
In addition, Mr. Chairman, the town has fiber on various poles. If you're, you all are getting together to schedule the change and the removal, you need to include the town.
Hundred percent.
And give us notice so we can have our contractor go out there and take care of that.
Can you provide, can you provide Eversource and Verizon with a map of where we put fiber?
Well, I think, I think we can give you guys a list of.
They've got, they've got the map.
Yeah.
Oh, you have the map of where we put our fiber? Down what roads and?
We know who's on every pole, yeah.
But you know the path?
Yep.
Okay, that's fine. There you go. All right, I'll make a motion to continue to September 17, 2024, subject to staff recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I will say this, it's Michelle, right?
It is.
There was an issue, I was notified by Gary Hathaway at Skull Box. You know, that pole right, literally right in the middle of this driveway. And I put him in touch with Michelle, and I think they're working on that. So I do, you know, in fairness, to raise an issue when the customer service was very good in that instance, so just want to at least recognize that.
Well, that's nice of you.
Thanks, Anthony and I are working on it, so appreciate that, yeah.
I think that'll be a big help if we're able to fix that situation.
I'm working on it, I.
Thank you, I appreciate it, it just doesn't seem to be happening fast enough. I get a lot of residents that sit there and complain, right? And there's a lot of residents that walk with little children and baby carriages and just.
And you can feel free to give my contact information to any of those folks. You should have it, I've given it out, and I'll give you again. I don't mind getting.
That's fine, I just, I try to save you the grief of listening to five people and just listen to us, and if they actually listened to the Board of Selectmen, which are the town fathers, I, I think we would have a lot more progress moving forward, right? So we've talked about six different poles, those same six poles are still sitting in the same place. And that's on the other side of town from whatever happened, car accidents or whatever happened, right? That hit the poles. It's not even got to do with solar and his upgrades and everything else. And now we got 200 and something new poles, all doubled up. It's crazy.
And I wrote them down from the last time, but I could have missed a few. So I can follow up with whomever to make sure I have the exact addresses and streets, because I was up at the podium speaking, and I wrote them down, but I may have missed a few, so.
I'll, I'll do another drive-by and I'll give you exact addresses, as close proximity as I can to a pole. I mean, you might have like, you know, 400 Middle Road, and there's nothing else in between, so I'm just going to say on or about 400 Middle Road.
That's absolutely fine.
You folks can drive by and go, oh, yeah, there's the pole.
I just want to make sure I captured everything that I sent to my.
That's fine, I appreciate it.
Yep, thank you.
All right. Thank you enough, thank you. All right, we're no other business under open session, executive session. Under General Law, Chapter 38, Subsection 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, United Steel Workers Union, ASME, Teamsters, DBW Laborers, Fire EMS, Fiscal Year '25 warrant, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the binding position of the public bargaining, the chair so declares, and the board will not return to public session at conclusion of executive session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Right.
Mr. Hinkley, roll call vote?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
And I, yes, we are now in executive session.